Well, this it is six o'clock. We're going to start this special session of the Carlton City Council. Could you call the roll, please?
Erin Linda Watson.
Here.
Council President Chris Ward-Mullin.
Here.
Councilor Kevin Skipper.
Here.
Councilor Fred Goff. Councilor Grant Erickson.
Here.
Councilor Jamie Egan.
Here.
Councilor Carrie Rose.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, this is the first of a series of quarterly updates that ODOT has committed to providing for the city on their progress and on their design work that they're doing on the ODOT Highway 47 realignment program. What we're going to do this evening is try to set this up for questions. We're doing this evening in three segments. The first one will be a presentation of 20 minutes from 20 minutes from ODOT on what they're where they're going and what they've got going on. And I'd like to introduce Anna Henson, who is the ODOT's area manager, and Paul Welch, who is the project manager on this project. The next 20-minute segment will be community questions. We've asked people to sign in when you came in. If you wanted to ask questions, you will have the opportunity to do that. We are going to keep the question and answer for each one at three minutes so that that's the entire part of it, so that we can get in as many people as we possibly can. If we don't get to your questions, we will send them over to ODOT for personal answers and later on in the when they when they can. And then part three will be a question and answer period for the city council. And so that the councilors can do any follow-up questions at that point. Can everybody hear me? Okay. Is I doing all right? Okay, I should have asked that first. So with that, we'll start with the ODOT presentation from ODOT. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the council for inviting us to come and give a update on the project and progress we've made up to date. So I do appreciate you guys getting an opportunity for us to tell you about this. As you know, the last few months, we've had open our survey. And then also, we had in the last month, I believe they covered this last month's council, the questions from the council and the ad hoc committee and stuff along that line. And so what we have done is the survey closed on the 50, and then the survey along with the with the questions, we had over 300 responses. So we had a really good response to the survey. So for everybody that entered a question and took the time to fill out the survey, we appreciate you doing that. It really is value of input for us, so we do appreciate that, taking the time to do that. So what's going to next with that? So we will take that, obviously, it's a lot of information, and we're going to take that information and we're going to compile it. We will be retracting the personal information, you know, names, websites, or email addresses and stuff along that line. And then once we have that all compiled up, we will be sharing that with the city council and the city so that they can see the data from our survey. A little bit of it's in the frequently asked questions, the goal segment in there that comes up. But once we get that compiled, we'll get that to the city council. I know there was a question about the questions submitted by the city council and the ad hoc. There was a lot of questions, and we I wasn't able to answer all of the questions. And you know, what I want to do with that is I want to get those answers so that that form is complete. And that when we send it back to you guys, every question is answered. And that's why I didn't have that available this briefing page. You just just didn't have the time to get it compiled. So again, that was a little bit of the frequently asked questions we compiled out. And I think along with these questions tonight, we'll answer a lot of those questions. But again, just know that those you will be getting what is those answers written out of the written form back. And then again, for the frequently asked questions, we do have handouts over there. They're on the project website, and I believe also on the city website, they're also there. So again, this is for those, I'm sorry about the blur there, but for those that don't know, this is kind of the concept drawing that we've come up with. This is again from a numerous meetings and input from the community and working with ODOT. There's obviously those people fired to myself and Anna working on this project who kind of got it to where we're at today. But this was in line with the they looked at a lot of different opportunities and ways to bypasses and stuff along that line. And again, so we're limited in time tonight, so I'm going to say refer to the frequently asked question. That does have a pretty good explanation of the history of how we kind of got to here. But again, this is this is what we've come up with. And we had to kind of get to this point right here to be able to see, is it feasible? Can we put something in that we know can work? As you can see, we've got buildings and and stuff that we have to work around, and we had to come up with a plan that to see that it would work. So that's kind of where we've gotten with this one. It is off of the TSP long-term plan for the city. And now I'm going to go through and give you a little bit more detail on this. But some of the project benefits that we have off of this just straight out is that we're going to improve pedestrian safety. The survey that we have, the nice thing about it was I was able to check in on that live. So as the responses were coming in, we had about 156 responses on the survey. So but I was able to check that because we had it open for a couple of months. So I was able to take a look at that and see what your guys' score, what you like, what you, you know, had concerns about. So we were able to take that and start implementing it already into our design. And I was taking you back to the design team and saying, what about these concerns? Is there anything we can do if they stay if they like this? Is there anything we can do to enhance it or stuff along that line? So your input is actually already being, you know, put into design as much as you can with that. So one of those things was, you know, was one of the major concerns was pedestrian safety. So we'll have six-foot sidewalks, the entire length of this project. The one of the things also that we really looked at with pedestrian safety was as you go down Yambill and Main Street, you know, you get a lot of the semis that are jumping the curb. And we really wanted to eliminate that because that's not safe for pedestrians. And it's not, you know, not safe that truck just jumping on the curb there. So we looked at that and want to make sure we eliminated that. It's going to reduce congestion, it's going to reduce noise pollution, and reduce the traffic on Main Street, you know. Switch those over to Yambill and Pine. And the nice thing about that is, you know, after our jurisdictional transfer, the city will regain control of Main Street and Yambill. And that'll allow you guys the opportunity, I know you have a lot of events and stuff up here. But that'll allow you control of that of the street development, shut it down, you know, if you want to, and have more control over your festival and stuff along that line. So starting out, mine and Main Street intersection, we completed a traffic study in April of this year. So again, some of the questions on from the survey were, and even from input from the council and the city was, is a signal. Can we put a signal in there? And the traffic study shows that this time that we have to meet certain federal and state requirements. So at this time, we don't meet those requirements. So that's why we're not putting a signal in at this time here. What we are doing is we're going to do a two-way stop. So you'll have a stop here at Main, and you'll have a stop here at on each side of Main Street. 47 will be will not have any stoplight, it'll just be a two-way stop on there. What we're looking at that is reduce noise pollution and moving traffic through town at its slowest speed. I know that's one of the other important things is that, you know, keeping the speed down. So one of the first benefits that we're going to get from that is we do have on-truck traffic, and we've seen that from the survey. There's a lot of concern over the trucks. There's a study out that shows that a semi truck, so from a stop position, and it starts to accelerate and run through this here, it runs about 30 to 50% more noise than a truck that would be doing, in essence, 20 miles an hour, not happening to stop. So they're going to be a lot quieter going through town. We also seen from the survey that there was a lot of concern about the blinking lights. So we are going to eliminate those from so you'll have no blinking lights. I know that for the people that are in town, you guys are used to them, you know what's going on with those. But for out-of-town people, it's a lot of confusion. I've actually seen that myself, watching intersections, stuff like that. And they also, again, one of the bigger things is, like I said, I know it's speed very important for you guys. So we have design features in here, like these bowl valves. And a bowl valve is where you extend the curb out, and what that does is that narrows the road. And people are not as comfortable on narrow roads, so it will reduce speed. Our mid-block crossing is an area I want to address here. So that's this area right here that we're looking at. So again, we're going to do bowl valves on the on that crossing right there. What what do those do? Well, they have a few benefits that they that they will provide. So one of them being that the bowl valve gets the pedestrians out into view of the traffic a little bit more. So they're able to stay in a safe place and allow traffic to, you know, be more visible to traffic, allow that to sit and stop. It shortens the distance that they have to do to cross the road. So as you can see right there, it's a shorter distance. And then another thing, it narrows that road, so it's going to help reduce speed of traffic going through there. Now, again, from the from the survey and the, you know, concern over pedestrians, this is also an area that we're looking at for an enhanced pedestrian crosswalk. And what that is, is if you've seen those, like the the flashing yellow lights where you can push the button, and it just is, it's more of a signal to drivers that a pedestrian is engaged in crosswalk and looking to block. Along with that also, with the enhanced crossings comes more illumination. So we'll actually, if we're able to put this in, it'll be a brighter crossing, you know, evening, morning, or night. It'll be well-lit for cars to see the pedestrian. Now, you may notice that this is kind of, we're looking at this spot right here where the bus station where the bus stop currently is. So we will work with the bus company to find the best place to move the bus stop. Coming up to the intersection of Monroe and Pine Street, again, looking at some of these design features that we can have for helping reduce speed. So the bowl valve, you can see here, and also the traffic separator, which is this this line right through here. That traffic separator, again, narrows the road. People go less, you know, they're going nuts, goes fast, but the narrow road there. One of the other things it does with the trucks, it keeps the trucks in their lane. So the trucks, you know, because they're not wanting to drive their trailers over that, so they'll make a nice wide turn coming around here. They'll and it should slow them down as they go around and make that turn. Now, one of the things that it will do is that has been asked about is if you are coming southbound on OR 47, and you wanted to go to East Monroe, that will restrict left-hand turns, okay? And same thing is if you were coming out of East Monroe and you wanted to go southbound onto 47, that turn will be restricted. But again, appropriate, we're here in the firehouse of emergency vehicles where those precious seconds count. This is a four-inch high, what we call mountable defier, so that means it can be driven over. So the MS vehicles that need to drive over that can do that. Again, this is, yeah, so this is one of our crosswalks, you know, right here. At this intersection, again, we have the bowl valves, reduces the length of across the road. But again, from the survey and your guys' input, because we know that obviously the soccer field's up here, you have a lot of kids in the area and stuff along that line. We're also looking at this area as a possible one for one of the enhanced crossings. So and that's again from you guys' input from the survey. I want to back up just to, sorry. One other thing, one other note I wanted to make, this was again just from input and questions from you guys. So if, you know, up in what would be up in this area up here, you have that neighborhood to the north. And, you know, safe routes to school and getting your children to safely to school. So this is, like I say, they'll be able to come down along the, which is, there's none currently right now, but along the soccer field will be a six-foot white sidewalk. So the children, on the other pedestrians, will be able to walk along this. And then now this sidewalk here will will end, but they can cross here and either go down to Main Street and head over to Third, or they can continue out that way. So they will have a safe crosswalk to go across and and not have to cross OR 47 in order to get through. We get up here to the north, Monroe and Yambill Street, there's there's not a lot to talk about up here, not a lot of design features. Like say, you know, this is like some of the concerns we were looking at coming in real close to buildings. These are kind of concept drawings, they're not exactly the scale. But you can see, you know, as we line these roads up here to have safe, wide side distance, it does it does cut in there. So that's some of the challenges that we've been looking at. But the one thing I want to really talk about here with this is there was questions in the survey about the traffic that comes from, I'm believing it's West Main Street, comes up and turns down Yambill Street and heads north and/or coming south. You know, can we restrict it? Can we do anything about it? No, that this time, we're not. Any traffic would be allowed to to go north or south down up Yambill and without any restriction. And up here, this is just just to kind of finish up on the details of it, this is the end of our project, Madison. Not a lot of details there for you guys. But the one thing I do want to kind of go over there, because again, from the survey, we've seen a lot of questions about trucks and what what, you know, can we limit trucks? Can we do something about trucks, stuff along that line? And what we have to do is because we're a state highway. So for, you know, I know there's some concern for out-of-town truck or out-area truck. But there's also a lot of local trucks that come through here. There's a lot, you know, your neighbors that make living driving trucks and stuff along that line. And we have to provide a safe road that everybody can use. It's a state highway, so we have to, we have to consider everybody from from truck drivers to people with horse trailers to RVs down to the bicycle, like people that want to use bicycles on that. So we have to pay all of this into consideration on these roads we have. With this, we put a lot in design, because that's another thing that we've seen from the survey and questions. And just as I get around to talk with a few of you in the community, speed. So there's a lot of features in here, I didn't cover them all tonight, that we're really looking at, how can we reduce the speed of traffic going through town? So we're trying to get traffic to go through your town safely and at a decent speed. It will be that 20 mile an hour be limited what we're designing this road for. We anticipate starting construction so early 2025. This is what we consider a two-season project, so that means that we'd be wrapping up somewhere in late fall to early winter of 2026. Now, we all understand that construction has impact on businesses. And we will do everything we can to work with the businesses. Obviously, we're going to have some impacts, you know, for the business owners and for the customers that want to want to come to your businesses. We're going to work with you guys to make that as painless as possible. But yes, there's, you know, it's construction, so it'll be some impact. We're going to work with you to do as best we can to limit those impacts and and work with you on that. So like I say, we've worked in a lot of towns before, so the nice thing about it is you're not getting things or anything along that line. So we're, we know how to do this, and and we're going to, we'll help get you through this. Next steps, partnering with the city of Carlton, so there's a couple of, you heard you referred to the jurisdictional transfer, and it's what we call an IGA. And all an IGA is, is just simply an agreement of who's responsible for what, maintenance and and power bills and stuff along that line. So we'll be working with the city to get those agreements and get those ironed out over the next few months. The jurisdictional transfer, and again, from the survey, we've seen the decisions, what's going to happen to Main Street and, you know, needs to prepare and stuff along that line. So that's, we're in the very early stages of that. But for those that don't know, obviously, what we're going to do is is the city of Carlton would transfer Pine and Monroe to us, and we would transfer Main and Yambill Street. We kind of just do a swap of the roads. We'll work through all the agreements so that it's fair for the city to, obviously, we know there's some repairs. But that's that's a part of what we'll do, is we'll work through that with the city so that we, you know, kind of add settlements, something along that line. I have a lot of people that probably just don't have the time. But we are working at it. It's not just going to be here, it's going to switch roads, and we understand that needs some repairs out there. We just have to work on the agreement with your city officials to see what's the best way to handle that. Again, next steps on that is we're continuing to work with the data that we receive from you and the questions, and we continue to compile that up, making that feedback to the project team, and doing, seeing what we can implement, what, you know, what we can do to improve this project. So again, we're going to have the future open houses, online open houses, outreach bits somewhere for this one here. And we encourage you guys to take part in it. You did a great job on the last one. So if you found here, please participate. We are listening, we are valuing your input, and we want to work with you guys to build the best road we can for you, Carlton. I know there's a Q and A, as I discussed here, a couple of Q and As. But may not make your questions, may not feel like, you know, public speaking, may not want to do that. So there's a way right here, we've got our board over here, you can take your cell phone, you can scan that. It's a link to where you can ask a question, it comes directly to me. There's only a couple of people at ODOT that see the question and and your information. And so you can ask your questions, and I'll respond, you know. Make sure to leave your name and your email. It definitely will not be public, but I'll protect all that. But I give me a way to answer back your questions and stuff along that line. We can't answer them in open forms like this, but if you have a question, I like to be able to ask, reach out directly. So with that, I think I I think I made it on time here.
You did good. You did good.
I will turn that over to council for the Q and A.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start with Planning Commission and Ad hoc Committee members. Do we? How did I? Yeah. Okay, got that? Okay, we're we're allowing, because we want to try to get as much as we can into here, we're allowing three minutes on a que- three minutes on a question. So keep your questions short because the answer will take up the other three part of that three minutes. And then if, when we get to the end of this 20-minute section, anybody who still has a question, write it down, and and we'll get it to ODOT, and we'll get their answers back that way.
So in about a minute, I'm going to hold this up so you know you have about 30 seconds or, and then we'll switch it over to a response, and they will have the same minute or, just so we can get through as many as
Thank you. So Mr. Wright, you had your hand up.
Thank you guys for being here. Can you hear me? Sorry, I want to thank Paul and Anna for being here. You're probably worried about being attacked, maybe. But it's all good, but it's easy here, it's a pretty fast speed thing. That's why the people are really hiding out of paper. We have a lot of folks. For me, Karen and I, our greatest concern is legacy. We were the ones who brought this idea to 22 years ago, thinking that ODOT would be very sensitive to how we function, thinking the pedestrian activity, getting with the kids, the afraid of kids that go not to the school. Cool. Okay. And making sure that that pedestrian activity can be maintained. And the design of signaling, the signaling that those four intersections, and Paul, you had it on the screen, those three intersections of Main, Main and Pine, Pine and Monroe, and Monroe, it could, like a key. They're key to how we function. It has to do with being able for, as you can imagine, because we're talking about now perhaps a two-stop for Main and Pine and traffic free flowing or the sound. I want you to think about this, but you imagine an eight-year-old who's trying to get across that street. Yes, you have them going, now you have them traveling perhaps to a pedestrian area, but now you have traffic that's not stopping for you. The sad and beautiful part of
That one minute? One minute?
Sorry.
He's going to have line three.
Is that is that is that trucks do have to slow down to make those corners? And when they slow down, our kids are able to walk across the street or stop. But if they're at speed and they are not, a reason to slow down? I think we need to face the fact that not only will truck traffic double, it'll double because it's so much easier to get through town. But they're going, they're going to be going faster. It'll be a challenge, an unintended challenge to make. I think thinking pedestrian is utmost, signaling those intersections so that kids can make it across without fear fearful of their lives. It's so key. That's what keeps us feeling the way we do. We're not mafia, we're not enemy. I'm sorry, but we're not Yambill. You know, we're different. We have a beat that feels really good. It feels good to be, it feels great to walk. And I, we need you to honor it. I mean, short of when I spoke with you both months ago about living in town, I was going to put you up for free in my loss. I'm serious, because I wanted you to know this town, to feel it, to walk it, understand it in a way you cannot unless you live here. But those three intersections are so key. And I also worry about east-west, ability to get east-west in this town is huge. If you don't have the ability for traffic on Main Street to get across when traffic doubles, it's going to be the backing up of traffic, or it's going to be, I think, that.
Thank you, Ken. Sir?
Pam?
You are?
Personal.
Go for it.
So part of this change is lack of competence. If I hold her to make take a Okay, part part of the problem that they're changing this for is a lack of competency in truck drivers that drive over curbs. Is that correct?
No, that's, I don't know, I can't say that the ability of the truck driver, obviously, they're a licensed truck driver, so they they show competency in driving the truck, so I can't say that that's why they're dumping the curbs.
Okay.
Well, okay. And and this new route takes away parking on both sides of whatever this is, Pine Street, it takes all apart from Monroe Street. And will eventually, because I park my trailer at the soccer field, will take away my ability to come in and out of town by truck, which is fine. But are they, are these people being compensated for this? For all this, you're taking up your parking and all that. I'd ask for private landowners or for, yes, like people that have business on Monroe Street, if they can compensate.
Or the the land that we would take, you know, or acquire.
So yeah, we, yeah, we'll have those stopping their business with no parking.
But we're not out of software business and stuff. And we, like I say, in about a year from now, is probably when we would start a right-of-way negotiation, and they will work with each individual business owner. And then we will, they will come to an agreement of a settlement. It's a real big transaction to purchase either the property right out that they need. Sometimes we purchase temporary easements, so whatever we need, you know, we will work with those business owners or those landowners and acquire, and they will be compensated for what we acquire.
Thank you. Tony? Speak up.
You guys? You want to hear me? Yeah, so I wanted to say thank you for being here and for giving us the opportunity to voice a few questions. There was a comment about a traffic study being done. My question is, just very briefly on that, was that a traffic study that was done based on traffic patterns as of today? My question is, just very briefly on that, was that a traffic study that was done based on traffic patterns as of today? As of September or as of, excuse me, August 2022? Or is this based on what's going to happen once we rewrap this whole thing? And let's call this truly what it is. This is a freight corridor, which is what Highway 47 is designated in town here, which means this is going to be a preferred traffic route for trucks. And there's, I think Ken's estimate of doubling the, the truck traffic through town is probably a gross underestimate. And when you talk about putting in traffic lights and things along those lines, I would actually say that it probably needs to be based on what's going to happen as opposed to what's happening that, because this doesn't mean anything. You're irreparably and forever changing the flow of traffic through this town and making it much more attractive for, for truck traffic to come through town, which I think is probably against what most people are looking for. The other thing I would say, just based on the Pine Street intersection, Monroe and Pine, where that intersection is, when you talk about the left-hand traffic being restricted, don't you mean eliminated? Because there's not going to be a way for traffic that's moving to the east to actually continue on that direction. So let's, if that is the term, let's say eliminated, not restricted. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, that's, that's fair assessment.
Okay, and so what about the traffic survey and what about the increase, the massive increase in truck traffic, all traffic that's going to be coming through in downtown Carlton?
So again, what we do is we look at that, so that survey was done in April.
And some traffic today or traffic five years from now?
Yes, so that's, that's what we look at, if we take that survey and we can project a little bit, because we, we had to get this a little bit earlier than what we wanted to, so we didn't do it as of August. Like I said, we know that you guys are a little bit busier, but we got it as close as we could, that the traffic people felt uncomfortable, that hey, this would project for your busier time. And what we do is we look at that, yes, it's today's, but we also take that information and we project that down, what's going to happen in 20 years? So we're looking at that, we take that survey and calculate out to the 20-year look.
And what does that say? Truck traffic's going to triple or group all, couple? What is your traffic? I mean, I've not seen it, so I don't know.
Speaking of backseat on that, I'm not exactly sure what, what, what says that what our traffic predictions are, but it's an important thing. Yeah, our roads are designed that'll have a requirement for 20 years, at, basically for, to be able to boost standard for roads for 20 years. That's the idea behind it, that'll have a requirement of that. But we can check on that, get back to you.
Yeah, rather not to check on, I'd rather we prepare more for the future and, you know, make proper adjustments. I sent a couple of comments to your site, heard nothing back, so as far as I'm concerned, you guys are awesome.
Time out.
Speaking of the safety of the street, does ODOT?
That'll be a part of, of the agreement that the IGA that I talked about.
Are they a part of?
I think, I don't know off the top of my head exactly what the IGA is, typically, we have our. Yeah.
They can't, every single platform here is like.
I don't know the answer to that, because if that didn't make sense, that I haven't seen the IGA of that, but I would take a look at that and get back to you.
Okay, thanks. Annette? Speak up.
Why, it's the long semis, so we, I'm helping the night. Not designed very much. At this route, we'll make those ratings, those semis, April. Approximately 80 degree speed. There is actually a few things that, that's actually, that's. There's a band to be a part of that, that you call the, 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 to follow him. Thank you. You asked about striking, and my, they were private. It's a really small town, in Florence, they called it a corner for years and bothered me at ancient years. It was a lot of stuff. Fun, like all of the, that's.
Thank you, Annette. Sir. Steve, Kayla?
Yes. My question is, is the speed that these projects and say that everything you implement based off of now or? Based on what Canada people said about the fact that it's always doubling the distance. How long does it take ODOT to respond to that? Does it take months? Does it take years? Or will you have to put up with headaches at night because of decisions that weren't done properly or not listened to? And as, and then all of a sudden, it's gone, well, we're going to look at this through another survey and we'll get to this three or four times a time. So your reaction is, I mean, I don't assume anything, so that out there, what is your assumption as far as, how long will it take if we run into a situation where it is unsafe, unsafe to people and nobody can run the business because traffic, the noise, and just access to their property and the way that the wiring functions around? So that's my question.
Got to clarify and just make sure I understand your question correctly. So if we see a problem, just how long would it take us?
After you see a problem, after you implement and then, and then we start noticing that the problems are happening. How long does it take for to address those? And if you do address those, how long does that take to, 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 if it's properly worked?
Safety issues, like I say, if we're something along that line, yes, we'll, we'll jump on that as quick as we can, but obviously we want to save the issue. I guess, it may not be the answer you're looking for, but I don't know exactly how long it would take, it would kind of depend on, on what the issue is. You know, that's kind of, I mean, that's a real overreaching question there, but it would probably just depend on, on what it would, what it is. And then we have to take a look at, see, you know, what does it take to fix that? And I don't, I couldn't tell you those timeline.
Is this a done deal?
Is it, what is that?
This trap, this route?
Um, sir.
Sorry.
We got a question in the back there.
No, this, this is about getting pedestrians and bicycles and vehicles, cars. This is about moving the traffic that goes through Carlton. You have a lot of, you have a lot of hard stuff. Well, there's a lot, yeah, there's a lot of, you know, trucks seem to pop up a lot, but they're not, they're not just, there is a lot more beautiful traffic, harder traffic.
We're talking about not having four-way stop and. We just three stop, and then that car is always going, always active. Because now people will think it's a four-way stop and, even with the signs, and then people will start to go.
Let me answer their question, I just want to answer her. So the, along that line, just, like I say, we are, it does take us a while to do this. Like I say, we're looking at construction in 25, that means we're looking at design in 24. So as things come up and we evaluate them again or look at that, so there's, there's room to do things here. We just had to come up with something to see if it was feasible. So yes, we can take input and stuff along that line and discuss it. And see what, what, you know, what is the best solution for, for problems. So that's, that's a part of what we, you know, it's not just, and we're done, you know, we'll be, we'll be reaching out, you know, with it, with online open houses and stuff, see what you guys concerned, what you like, what you have to concern about with projects and stuff along that.
Um, Tim, we're going to go with Tim Corrigan, and that's going to be our last question. I'm sorry, we're at our 20-minute cutoff.
The we're still looking at that, that's, that's a part of it, but a part of what you have right here, these are dedicated, these little red lines here, they're kind of dedicated by trucker lane. Now, if we came down, again, just like I say, we have to take into consideration a lot of stuff. As you get over to Monroe and Pine, when you turn down Pine Street, then they become a shared bicycle, you know, bicycle, shared lanes with, with that. But we do have the ones that, that have a dedicated kind of buffer by coming along that.
Okay, we're at the end of our 20 minutes for audience. We've got 20 minutes to go with our city council. Shirley, do you want to, council president, do you want to start?
I don't have any questions.
You don't have any questions? Um, Fran, you got any questions? I was afraid of that. Don't clog all the time.
I won't. So to go with Lynette, is that right?
And that.
To go with her comment about the radius of trucks. You saying that traffic is going to change coming down, to go down Yamhill to the gas station and turn to the right. Are you, have you at all looked at that, about fixing that corner? Because the trucks right now end up in the oncoming lane to swing that corner.
Are you, are you talking about that?
I was talking about down here at Yamhill and West Main. West Side.
Yeah, that's, that's where, yeah, that, that would be a part of this project there, that would be a part of the jurisdictional.
Well, with that, have you even at all looked at that, fixing that corner? Because the trucks are, are having the same problem there as they do up there at the Barrel 47.
Still, we haven't got that part of the discussion.
The trucks are bigger nowadays with that. Okay, so you haven't even at all looked at that, possibly fixed them at some point?
That's something we ended up discussing with city, probably Shannon and that, city came there, lots of compliments. It's the city staff to work out that jurisdictional transfer question. A part of what will happen down there is it's up to the city, so, once they, once the swap is done.
We're going to try to take this in alphabetical order, just to keep you guys under control here. Which means I got out of order and it's Jamie's turn next.
Because I'm just concerned about the safety of the kids and walking community and want to make sure that the, especially with the Main and Pine, oh, yeah, Main and Pine. Just having two stop signs, I think it's still going to be confusing to folk that is, I watch it every weekend because I'm down there every weekend. And it's near misses all the time. So just want to be aware that it's a, could be an issue and is an issue.
And it's something that we, that we watch, and there's the traffic studies and, and, you know, if there's accidents and then increases and stuff along that line. We do want to do those things, so we.
I know. It'd be nice to prevent accidents before they happen though.
Nice to prevent accidents, we do the best we can to try to make it as safe as possible. And like I said, I know, you know, the children crossing the street has kind of addressed Ken's conversation there. You know, that's one of the reasons that I'm pushing really heavily to get the enhanced crossings, because that does help, you know, your children, especially if they're intending to come up, push the button. And it's going to stop these, you know, it's going to stop the traffic and, and make it more visible that, that your pedestrians or your children are trying to cross. But yeah, we, we're open to discussion on this stuff here, it's the on top of close book, so.
Carrie?
The survey numbers, how close were they before we possibly look at a traffic light for? Because we don't have any numbers, I know we're kind of talking about that, I mean.
Yeah, to clarify, you're asking, like, how close were we to have a, I'm sorry to use a word, but we're signaling.
Our projections say that it might be in about 20 years, maybe the, the traffic would be there. But again, those are projections, so if it, if it changes, it changes, but that's, that's what the numbers are saying right now. I'm sorry.
I would just like to see those survey numbers, to see how close we were to that, because I would like to have that traffic light in there because at what, at Main, Pine is going to be a nightmare there. Because people are trying to speed out when they're trying to get in front of somebody else, kids, I mean, that place needs a traffic light, period.
Shannon has the, the traffic survey, I sent that to her, I think last week or something like that, I can't remember, but yeah, so she has that.
I shared it with council.
And you shared with council, okay, so that sounds like you have available to that, but yeah, you read through it and asked your questions and please reach out, that's, that's my information, it's all out there, so, you know. Bring my phone, send me an email, whatever you need to do, I'm here to answer questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, councillor Skipper?
Um, a couple for you. On that turn radius at Main and Pine, how, why has that not been looked at previously of like, why didn't we have? With the current route, I would say, or had that? Did what Lynette said, correct, that that is in adequate? Turn radius for that?
I don't have the history of that. And so I don't know whether it was, you know, there was a project, like I say, prior to this project, they did look at, at, you know, repairing Main and Yamhill. But I don't, I, you know, I wasn't involved in that part of the project there, so I can't ask that question. From what I've seen, probably pretty spot on, you know, it was an older road and, and, you know, trucks are bigger and longer and, you know, even, even just your work trailers or RVs, you know, and fiddles and stuff like that, you know, that, they went from, you know, layer screens to, you know, there's 30, 40-foot RVs running down the road nowadays, dude, so.
If you could jump to the intersection of Camp Hill and Pro. I think it would kind of skip over really quickly, but what does that look like? I don't remember hearing what signal there, is that a stop? What does that look like for traffic emerging anymore than that?
So there would be a stop sign here and then, so this would be free-flowing through there, so OR 47, that traffic would not have any stop signs. If you're asking if we have stop signs here, no, so we just see Yamhill, or yeah, just coming off of Yamhill, would have a stop sign there.
Okay, and then the big thing that got glossed over really quickly, which I understand it's still in the works, and one of my biggest concerns is the jurisdiction. Roads are not cheap, the city doesn't have money to fix what we have existing, we're actively searching for money for that. So that's a big, that's a big thing. And when years passed, when they first met here, I know it was talked about that, oh, it was promised that we'll fix this, we'll repair this, before we get to see a sound like that. Not the way we're going, which I, at the time, totally thought that that was not going to be the case. So I think that's, that's one of the biggest, you know, also the safety and everything else, it's huge to me, but what that looks like kind of drives a big, it's a big thing for, when they decide what, you know, a dollar amount, what the, because as you know, streets and those are expensive. And there's a lot of infrastructure underneath those, that means it's like, too, so. That's one of the things that I'm really interested in, those conversations with city.
And Shannon can, you know, we can bounce back and forth here on this one here, but from what we, so we're very early in the jurisdictional transfer, we've had a few, we've come up with some estimates and stuff along that line of what it would take. But one of the reasons, you know, there's like, say, the question, hey, are you going to repair, are you going to, you know, come back and repair Main Street and stuff along that line? What we've been told is the city, because of the infrastructure underneath the sewer lines, the water lines and stuff along that line, is that the city wants to come through, repair those, and then have to pay that for that, so you guys need time, because you don't want to have just construction and construction going on, on both, you know, here on Main Street and Yamhill and also Rockvine and that. So there would be a pause on that and then the city would do the infrastructure work. And so what we were looking at is, is we're kind of leaning towards that way, it's probably a cash settlement, so swapping the roads and then cash equivalent of, of what it would take to repair the road part of that. Is that accurate, Shannon? that. Is that accurate, Shannon, for you?
I think that's been the understanding in the past. Public Works Director and I have had several conversations with the city engineer about when to do that utility work. We may have to do it before the jurisdictional transfer. Um, right now, it will not interfere with the pavement, as it is currently envisioned and designed, and so it will not interfere with what was promised as bringing main street up to city standards. Uh, so we are looking at options, um, and we are looking at alternatives of having work done while this realignment is still being designed, and we... Fran, do you want to add anything to that?
Everything. Okay, thanks. Councillor Ward-Moyn?
Yeah, I don't have a question, it's a comment regarding Monroe Street, and you had briefly mentioned it about the eastbound, that eastbound trap.
Could you speak up a little?
I'm sorry. I've got, I have a comment about Monroe Street and the eastbound access, you know, to the neighborhoods in the east, northeast of the community. I'm very concerned about eliminating that access, and that all of that traffic has to go somewhere else, it just cuts off basically more than half of our community. And that's a big concern. I think we need, need to relook at that option.
We're still evaluating that, and we're still looking at some studies and stuff along that, to see what the best, you know, solution is. But one of the things, like I say, that we hear is, is the speed, you know, we want to really control the speed, and that, and that's, the Biden really does a good job of that, so, but it doesn't mean that we can't look at some options for it, and, and we are discussing that, so, again, that's, that's my take. We had to come up with a concept, see that it was feasible, and, and we're very early in, in our design on this, so that's why we're asking for it, and, and what's your concerns? So, you know, nothing's, you know, a done deal right from the moment, so we're open.
All right, thank you. Um, we're gonna use a little bit of time here for some folks that didn't. Tim, you had your hand up earlier.
Statement, pardon me, make a statement. I think I'm, Jim.
The one about, something kind of turned about mostly, this is safety aspect. I appreciate that, so, I appreciate. I would like to add, I think that's a good part of the, of the, there are just issues on, I mean, there's been some, and I would like to, skip. If you wanted to compare them, uh, I think, yeah, so that's, that's what I would like to ask you to, please, on, and many of us have been this long time, have, have, have included, uh, fine. But, having a stop there, you're, you're, you're thinking, uh, things, uh, that, you create, are, create a full stop, and again, our continues are not too much, at least, I can say this much, because, and the, so, so close, always back, all of my, and, if someone meant, you know, feel, realize that the traffic, uh, and, we have, that's mine.
Thanks, Tim. Um, yeah, we've got five minutes.
Five minutes, okay, I'll, well, let me, let me.
And Shannon still has to say something.
So, yeah, I live in your community, I have children, and grandchildren, and we sit here, and when we look at this, you know, we're not just a bunch of engineers that are just sitting here looking at this and saying, you know, hey, let's cap out, we can reduce traffic down, and reduce the noise pollution, stuff like that. Safety is our number one concern to know about. And, and so, when we're looking at projects like this, I imagine my family doing that, and, and being a part of that community. So when we look at these things, we are looking at that safety, and, and for your children, because we know that's our responsibility, is that we're supposed to provide as safe as we can for you guys, so it is looked at. You may not think we do, but we do. You know, I didn't say that. Yeah, that's, I would like you to. And I, I, but not placing safety above the issue.
Okay, thank you, guys. Shannon, did you have one comment?
I have a, a comment, and if the council will entertain, I have eight questions for ODOT that they probably don't have answers to today, but I'd like everybody to hear them today, and for ODOT to come back with these answers. The first comment is later today, um, council is going to be talking about a different public engagement method, that the city is going to manage, and we will take one topic area at a time and invite ODOT to come. We've talked to Paul and Anna about this briefly, about setting up monthly meetings, taking one chunk of this at a time, because nobody likes being limited to three minutes. So if we limit it to one topic area, that'll give us some time, two hours to talk about it. We're gonna be talking about that later this, this evening, so I want you to know that, because I know there's probably a lot of frustration leaving here tonight. And if the council will entertain me, I'd like to ask these eight questions and allow ODOT opportunity to respond at a later time. Is that all right?
Go ahead.
Yeah. Okay. Um, what would it take to preserve the special transportation area on the proposed new constructed area that has exceptions for pedestrian bicycle business access, and sort of calming pedestrian safety methodologies such as 11-foot travel lane? What would it take to preserve that? Has the project been cleared by the Mobility Access Committee, as currently drawn? What are the chances of this project slipping into the next SIP cycle, 24, 20, 27, to allow for more public engagement and opportunities? Can always stops be put in place immediately at Pine and main, and main and Yam Hill, as noted in the 1999 and 2009 TSP? This would allow both ODOT in the community an opportunity to evaluate the pros and cons of this changed condition. We can evaluate whether it actually increases traffic noise, if it actually increases the queuing. What is the process to put speed cameras on OR 47 immediately? It also offers an opportunity for both ODOT and the community, an opportunity to evaluate the, the data on the speed on main street immediately in real time. What's the process to do a corridor refinement plan that will promote public involvement and design refinement by examining OR 47 within the city limits as a viable, safe, and sustainable corridor that addresses pedestrian bicycle access and safety, neighborhood connections, motor vehicle mobility and safety, and economic development? There were three roadway alternatives in the 1999 TSP. Have those alternatives been reexamined, given the population and development changes within the city of Carlton? There were three alternatives in the 2009 TSP. What examination and consideration have those been given with the increased population development with the city of Carlton, including the left turn and warrants mentioned in that? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, guys.
Thanks for having me.
We really appreciate the time.
I'd just say to you, we all, just not to go back to you, but it's one of the, you all, you and Shannon, because we're such leaders, we truly care about the community, show it, uh, for a bit longer in time now, you care, you care about it to a level that it's unusual, really, um, I think, and I truly agree with you, thank you.
Thank you from all of the past. Hey, motion to adjourn?
Yeah, motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you. And we will be moving into, how would you want to do this?
You'll be beginning in the 7 o'clock break of session.
Yeah, I was just checking. Yeah. Are all the councillors here?
Yes.
Uh, I don't have anything to cover your eyes. Grant Erickson, councillor Erickson.
Time to go.
Time to go.
Who could barely speak, who had no one show up.
Folks, it's 7:05, the August meeting of the Carlton City Council is now in session. Could you call the roll?
Mayor Lincoln, Lincoln Watkins.
Here.
Council President Shirley Ward-Moyn.
Here.
Councillor Kevin Skipper.
Here.
Councillor Jeremy Brandow. Absent. Councillor Grant Erickson.
Here.
Councillor Jamie Eglon.
Here.
Councillor Kerry Rose.
Here.
Uh, normally, we would be doing the pledge of allegiance now, but where is it? Okay. Where am I with me, and saying the pledge of allegiance, I guess. Look at whichever flag you want. Um, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All righty. Are there any changes or additions to minutes, or to the meeting, to the agenda?
There is a change to the West Main escape grant line item, we'll discuss it very briefly.
Okay, ceremonies, appointments, and announcements. We have.
There is a proclamation for Bob Graham.
Yes, I can find it in here. Where did he go?
Would you like me to read it, Matt?
Uh, yeah, I can't find it.
Here, here it is.
Oh, here, we got it. Thank you, Jamie. As most of you, some of you know, or most of you might be aware, Bob Graham, who was spent, uh, put many years in on the Planning Commission, has retired, and Bob is, most of you know, has been a fixture in Carlton for many, many years. And we wanted to make note of the fact that he, he is retiring. So we have a proclamation thanking Bob Graham for his leadership, dedication, and commitment to the city of Carlton. Whereas Bob Graham was first appointed to the Planning Commission in 2010 and sworn into office on May of 2010, and whereas Bob Graham was reappointed in 2014 and 2018, ultimately serving 11 years on the Carlton Planning Commission, and whereas Bob Graham witnessed incredible change in the Carlton community, and has had a hand in influencing policies, procedures, and practices that have impacted the place Carlton is today. And whereas Bob Graham spent innumerable, numerable hours reviewing development proposals to ensure growth in Carlton was in alignment with our city's comprehensive plan and development code, and whereas Bob Graham served four years as Planning Commission Chair, two years of Planning Commission Vice Chair. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Carlton, that the city of Carlton extends its thanks to Bob Graham for his leadership, dedication, and commitment to the city of Carlton from May 2010 to July 2022, introduced and adopted August 9th, 2022, by the city of Carlton. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jamie. Moving right along. I think, are we, we have this section of the agenda, which allows members of the public to address city council. This is city comments, or citizen comments, on any items off or on the agenda. When invited by the mayor, members of the public shall come forward, state their name and street address, and direct all comments to the mayor. Comments are typically limited to three minutes unless additional time is allowed by the mayor. The first section of this is items that are not on our current agenda. Comments, questions?
No online comments.
Thank you. Okay, the next one is item B, items that are on the agenda.
I need no online comments.
Thank you. Okay. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I moved to approve the consent agenda.
Hold on. Oh, okay, wait a minute. Yeah, councillor Skipper?
My, why was there no financial report?
There was a discussion about whether to include those monthly at this point in time, and due to some established, it wasn't printed, it could be included monthly, there was discussion about whether to include it. Was that, was that?
So we probably need to go through that with the full council then, I guess. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I moved to approve consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Councillor Eglon, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinances, resolutions, discussion, and action items. I think we're done with the ODOT discussion at this, we are not.
We are not.
Okay.
I have two topics I need to raise with council this evening regarding ODOT. One is regarding ADA grants in the historic areas within the downtown. The second is about city public engagement proposals for council consideration. Councillor Skipper, would you like to, wherever your nuts would be, just that?
It'll go away, thank you.
Or we can scoot down. I'm gonna ask those guys to.
Okay. So, for the ADA grant project, in your packet, you will see a generalized map. ODOT has done an analysis of the historical features within the city of Carlton, and they have outlined.
Oh, there you go.
Of course, we'll tell you by the drop.
We're on the board.
One more.
Yeah, I'm fine, I'll provide.
There.
There, perfect.
We can get you a hat.
Okay. So, within that historic district, we have a opportunity to weigh in on the type of domes, the color of the domes within that historic, for lack of a better term, square. It's obviously not square when you look at that map, but for lack of a better term. We have the opportunity to weigh in on some color options, and.
I'm sorry. Can we take it or leave it out for you guys?
Just a bit, okay.
I thought, you know, thanks for.
Um, so we have some options to talk about tonight, about different types of colors utilized within that historic area. And that historic area basically goes from Lennar down main street, basically to Yam Hill and main street. So, the historians of the project are looking to see if they want to. So, the historians of the project are looking to see if they want to make a different color choice. They said some cities that don't even have an official historic district, people either designate or mark their historic dome. So they are offering us some input, and I actually have some. So. We have a wine color. We have a more red, brick red. We have the traditional yellow that you will see in other areas. And we have a rusty metal type.
What was that?
That looks like a painting.
It would fit into the historic district very well.
I know council talked about this before, decided yellow, but they wanted to make sure you were aware of all the options. Now you can actually see the colors. So. That is, this is what was chosen before. So, if you can, if you have an opinion, now's the time to weigh in and choose something.
At the first I was thinking, well, we should probably keep those domes consistent where they're elsewhere in Carlton. But then when you're talking about designating the historic district, that I, we start to rethink that idea.
Do you have a preference?
Well, I.
The cast iron one looks nice.
Personally, I like the, what they call colonial red. That's my personal choice.
Colonial red versus the dirt red. Brick red is what Lafayette has.
And we have some of that in town, too, don't we, down on Scott Street?
Yeah, I think we might.
Yeah. The cast iron, that's what I like.
Yep.
I've no idea what that looks like in practice.
Well, I'm trying to think how it would work as far as wheelchair accessibility.
Yeah, what's the texture of that compared to these other ones?
As far as, they all have bumps.
Yeah, they all have bumps. I don't know with the cast iron if it'd be a little less.
But it's flexible. Which isn't a bad thing if you're doing wheelchairs. I mean, I am thinking about wheelchairs going over, which one is going to be easier?
They have all been tested for that. They have not noted any length difference once they've gone longer.
Weighty matters. It's about.
So, I heard two in favor of the small pieces there.
Well.
So is this one's a bunch of small pieces like that put together, or it comes in a big three by four, three by five feet?
That I don't.
It's on the backside of it.
Big key, doesn't like the other ones that are in town now.
Can you see the metal one? Has Brian, Brian, do you have any idea about how these work versus these in terms of wheelchairs crossing over them?
They're all made, they're all made for, where's in the dome, because. People, I, every, everything to come up and feel the. The slopes and the bricks are right. All of that, it's all. Don't take that.
It's up to you guys. Do we have a? Does anybody have a motion?
The only ones were the first ones that came out.
No, yeah.
These were the first. They gotta start making. I just, all these, fire them last, first.
So, motion?
Do we have a motion?
My move that we use the cast iron.
Is there a second?
Second. We're going to wait till you pick it.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Hi.
I'll go with it. I'm not going to go with that, but we'll go with it.
Okay.
Okay. Cast iron is.
Okay. Thank you.
The second part of the ADA ramp discussion in the historic area. Originally, as Paul was discussing, we talked about not doing any improvements on the ADA ramps until the jurisdictional transfer. However, myself and team members have, are concerned that if we wait, there's a couple of things that could happen. One, if we choose the metal and some of the ramps are dumb like in front of the nerve but not on Main Street, we may not be able to do the same product when we get. The second case is, the ramps are fairly expensive. ODOT is required to do these as part of a lawsuit settlement. If we set that amount in today's dollars, we're not going to hit those dollars until the jurisdictional transfer. There is a possibility that the city would have to kick in money for the ramp work. These ramp works is done at night, we would work with the business side. But because of involving circumstances with this project, our current recommendation is to have ODOT just do every ramp it required to do in the city.
Would you not, would the city not be paying for it regardless? Double, I mean, they would, they would eventually be paying for it if we had ODOT install it now. And then whatever happens with the jurisdictional transfer, when we rip up the road, we would be paying to do the ADA ramp again.
ODOT would be paving the road as part of bringing it up to city standards or a monetary amount depending on what we agree to. I have talked to Gordon and Brian. The sewer work that needs to be done would be done without ripping up the pavement. There would be some work on the sidewalks, and there's a possibility we would have to interfere with some of these ADA ramps. But most of them would stay in place because as we talk and get to utilities, part of the physical project, Main Street and Brownie, they are talking about directional boring. So it wouldn't be just ripping up sidewalks like. Brian, do you want to add anything? Doesn't have something to do with this noise over here?
There's some empty seats up here in the ground.
Yeah, when we do the jurisdictional transfer, there's probably going to be a ramp, too, that's going to be adjusted. There's going to be something after a little part of that. We won't have to rip that.
That was my question. We're going to have to rip out all of them. Makes sense to pay money later on.
I think you're right. Historically, we talked about everything would have to be ripped up and everything should be done at once to disrupt the business as once and one time only. But, we're learning that there's opportunities not to. That at times of bond for better purpose. There's the directional boring. Back to that. My biggest concern is about the financial health of the city as well as the infrastructure health of the city. And so I don't want to explain in 2025 what a city was paying for a walkout requirement.
No way that Walt can put something, clause in there that states that they will compensate in a couple of years down the road?
I have talked to the project manager. We've talked about an inflationary mechanism, we have to reach an inflationary rate, which is this year. But if we had had to do it this year, we had to reach to a 3% inflationary rate. That's an example. But I've also talked to the project manager about reinvesting costs when the transfer happens. And at least right now, the answer is no.
Walt would tell you that a burden.
Two in the bush.
Phrase I've been using all day.
Okay. Just ask.
Good question.
So your recommendation?
My recommendation is that we give ODOT a green light to do every ADA ramp that requires to do. And we do not have to negotiate your rate. Future cost.
And what we hear from Gordon is that maybe one or two might need to be adjusted later.
Might need to be adjusted for utility falls or something else. It's not perfect.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, yeah, and I agree, it's better to go that route than try to renegotiate with ODOT down the road.
Turn that about paying for something. Thank you.
Well.
A motion would be great.
I move that we approve the ADA, the complete set of ADA ramps within the city jurisdiction of Carlton. And it's the last part of the session.
Oh, we just authorize them to do all of ADA ramps.
Yeah, we authorize ODOT to do all of them in compliance with the requirements. ODOT's requirements.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Opposed? Epstein, motion carries.
Thank you. The last thing about ODOT. As we saw tonight, the current public engagement process can be rather limiting in a public meeting. I have proposed to you a different public engagement process. This is a lot of work on city staff, but because it's a critical project, I think it's worth bringing forth. What I'm proposing is that we take that larger committee as the core committee that you brought together last meeting. It would still be a public meeting, so public, they'll be invited to meetings. But we would use the core committee as the vice chair. And we would have a monthly meeting that would have one topic. It would be two hours focused on one topic that we can, and would include council, that we can hopefully hope to a consensus about that topic when it's available. By consensus, I don't mean 100% of agree on it, but that we've all felt heard it can support the majority of the. Topics are things like traffic control options. And we have two hours, we invite ODOT, we talk about the pros and cons of different traffic control from flagging to signalization to stop signs, roundabouts, and that two hours, and we talk about the pros and cons. And hopefully out of that meeting, come up with what we want to see as a community-driven, interactive engagement about that particular topic item. And then the next meeting would have another topic. So, that's sort of proposed and outlined. Again, it's a lot of staff time, it's a lot of work, but this is a critical project. Why I'm proposing.
It's the idea that those meetings would be held at City Hall or in another venue where more people could attend.
I think it's someplace hotter than knowing how to say.
It would be open to the public.
It would be open to the public. So we would have to find a venue that could accommodate us. It would be a public meeting, notice, and it's taken. So we still have to, we have a Zoom requirement or a remote participation requirement. So we have to figure out all of those. I don't have a location in mind yet. I'm not sure this is the best environment. Something a little more temperature controlled.
Yeah, we've done school before the auditorium.
We do have some exit. So there's nothing that's perfect, we'll have to figure some out. And maybe we try different venues to see what ends up being best. Because we'll have to work with those venues as well, they may have things.
Is there any comment?
Did I hear you correctly, two hours every month?
I'm proposing two hours a month on one topic area. Two hours is about most people.
That would be addition to a council meeting or separate meeting also.
It doesn't have to be monthly, that was just my proposal, given the fact that ODOT is in their design process.
I act for, I know it's a lot of time for people. Like, I get older now, so I understand that it's a repeat, but it's pretty important, it's a pretty big project that.
Right.
It's been going on for a long time, and it's, this is really important. If we dive into it now, we're going to actually.
We have one chance.
You know, we can, we, we basically only need a quorum at this, at that point. So it was, it would certainly be understandable that there are going to be members that, yeah, people that aren't going to be able to make it at one point or another. I don't think that we're requiring attendance, so.
And that's a two-hour max, what you're saying. I mean, we might get in there.
Get it done early.
Hour and a half.
You propose, I'm sorry.
Based upon my facilitation history, I'm recommending two hours max the most, because that's about the length of food energy.
Are you recommending this outside of the normal city council session every time of day? So it'd be a different day?
Yeah. It would be a different day.
Fair to say that the one, the limit of the one topic is to help eliminate the same questions being asked at every meeting?
Well, that, and I'm hoping that we can move on from the topic. We can get to a consensus in one meeting. Now, that may be ambitious of some of the topic areas. But assuming we can get to a consensus of the majority on a topic, that we can move on from that topic and move on to something else.
So, I just want to understand it. So like, maybe it doesn't look like we're talking about the intersection of Monroe and Pine for two hours? Like, or is it more broad than that, like?
It would be looking at traffic control mechanisms that all intersection. So, I want a four-way stop at Dane and Pine. I want a roundabout at Monroe and Pine. I want a four-way stop at Hand.
That would all be in one meeting?
That would be one meeting. And again, that may be ambitious, but that's what I'm suggesting. And to have that recommendation go forward for ODOT. This is what we want to see as a company. And again, ODOT would be invited to participate to be able to give their pros and cons from their their expertise.
I'm assuming that since it's anticipated to do this once a month, that they would most likely, maybe ODOT would want to anticipate by Zoom, rather than coming down once a month. I mean, I deal with they did, but.
They may. So just to say one.
I'm good.
The idea.
Everybody okay with moving forward to Frank's house or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you okay, at least initially, with what I've outlined in your packet as suggested starting point?
I think we could start there, and then, you know, as the meetings progress, we might be able to figure out something that's a little less time-consuming, or maybe not, you know?
All right. Thank you for allowing me to finish the ODOT.
Oh, thank you. That's Shannon, you've done some amazing work on this.
I also want to point out in your packet, you have a letter from Dan Burden from the Blue Zones Built Environment Team with a recommendation to council that you consider a peer review of the third ODOT.
I'm sorry, what?
A peer review, so a third-party independent review. I just want you to make sure to point that out in your packet. I'm not asking for a decision at this point in time, I just want you to be aware of it.
Okay.
Are they someone that does? They can also help decide.
So we'll discuss that later. All righty. Are we done? With ODOT? Are we moving on to B, Carlton Crush? Okay. Carlton Crush Event Packet.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Ellen is here from the Carlton Business Association. She put together the Carlton Crush Event Packet. She's here to answer questions I have.
I think it looks like it's nice to see Carlton Crush.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, talk to this location about Sprint's experience on, uh, I never looked forward to it as well. I'm also curious about being able to. Food, high growth. But, um, yeah, so we're looking at the location, uh, of the back, right, so that's where it went last year. Uh, that is working on. Do the upper part to, um, I have four people to be part of this event. And we want it to be business event as well as community and family friendly as well. So last year we had Downey House. We'll have it again this year. And in hopes that you guys approve that the location is okay, um, this year. I'm excited to be right in the Downey House that way. After three. All, I think, walk down to the front as well. And we will offer beer and wine. We're planning to barricade the front of the, um, so essentially the north side of the park, as well as the south side, to bring full houses. And then we'll have three food trucks on, uh, Grant Street and front of all, basically make like a, where there are doors not blocking anybody's homes or anything. To, uh, right up the path. And we have pretty much.
So all of the, all of the activity will be confined to Lad Park. There's grape stomp and everything?
Correct, yeah.
We've done it, Carlton Crush has done it there before.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then with the alcohol area, be where the basketball court is.
So that's why we're going to barricade the entire perimeter of the park is so that people can walk freely through. So there will be vendors who are wirelessly blocked here. And there's no physical location of where they stay except for inside the park. Still have alcohol on there at the entrance, on the outside of the park where full houses, and then also on the, uh, east side, which is where Cubay has, uh, their cell office here. So there will be no entrance point except for one location. Um.
What?
How will you barricade it? With rope or something?
Yeah, we have the same thing that we will, um, rent from Bynum.
Yeah. So anything will.
Oh, some rope.
You got it. More fluid orange.
Yeah, and they have the lighter.
Construction site.
Yeah.
What does that do to parents and children, I mean, parents of children? I'm, I'm kind of wondering how they're gonna react.
So like Carlton's Monday, there was only one area of counsel that was allowed and people weren't able to. So many parents who have kids who are on playground or in past years at Carlton's Monday, they sent out to house. This way, when you barricade the entire park, parents can watch their kids if they want to have class or if they don't want to have class. Therefore, when you only barricade the basketball court, you have to stay in the basketball court. So if kids want to go play at the park and you want to watch them, you can't really stay at the basketball court and watch them. So that way they can roam freely throughout the entire back.
Free range kids.
Free range kids, free range parents.
Watching their free range kids.
So you have, I read it earlier, can't find the page, you had something in here about having two people on Main Street for the crosswalk.
Correct.
Is that just too dedicated? Are you going to have shifts of people?
We're gonna have shift.
Okay.
So it won't be the two people.
The same two people all the time.
You're not going to have to do it this time, Brad.
I know, I'm not going.
You're willing to volunteer?
No, but I will. But part of that, with that, because I've just done it for fun days and not, not the whole night out, okay? For quite some time at both of them. And then tonight I was talking to Chief. And we drew a little rough sketch. He took a picture of it. And I would like for you to talk to him and he can show you a little bit different design to limit it down to one crosswalk.
Okay.
And a way to funnel people.
Sure.
Um, I just saw different drives. What's that?
Signage to direct people.
Well, there's, there's not really railings and different fencing or whatever you want to call it, barricades. But I just noticed that there's a lot of people that were a little bit confused about what was going on with two people directing and. So have you talked to Chief about what I talked to him about?
Sure.
I think it would help out, um, just for a safety issue is what I see there. But everything else I read in here looks good to me.
If you would like to volunteer, I'll let you.
You just volunteered.
I know.
You could supervise. You can just supervise.
It read in there somewhere that two residences are affected and they would be notified. I'm assuming that's on grant?
Yeah, so there's, I know one of them, uh, one of the old response grants.
Right.
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 It doesn't really affect them because we're not closing their, um, access to their, um, to their homes. So I noted, I, you know, I noted that it did affect them, but it didn't affect us getting to their homes.
Parking and traffic.
I'll reach it and make.
Right next to them.
I'll reach it and make, or will be made to them.
Exactly, yeah.
Um, and then a question for Shannon or maybe Amy or somebody. I know I've seen it before, I apologize, but can you, uh, can you explain the 5% nonprofit fee for concession sales? Are we taking, is it standard for us to take 5% off the top of log sales?
Maybe you're more familiar with that provision. In the tax for profit, that's. Instead of having a part. Mark, we need to check. So why PBA actually waived that experience?
That's how I thought I remembered that.
Yeah, not only that, so, um, you know, we do, this event is, um, to give money back to the PBA, which is a volunteer, and also to give money back to, like, the areas like the Rattling, Julia's House, and the YP, really, if it's evening and all here local. And the reason we're asking for that 5% concession fee is with, you know, giving back to charities, but also, um, this year there's a $25 temporary business license fee. So for any vendor who is not a licensed business in Carlton, they have to pay a $25 fee to the city of Carlton. Uh, so essentially, where the vendors do participate in this event are paying an extra $25 to participate in this event. It's not going to add going back to the city. Um, so a lot of vendors are kind of, you know, excited about it, but it's definitely to be able to solve over.
Now, it's the city of Carlton, because these vendors have told you, are we the only city that charges this? So these vendors pay something in other.
So this is new, uh, January. That the Shannon and Amy have that $25 temporary business license fee that any vendor who wants.
It's to make it.
Right, I understand that.
To make it fair to businesses that are here all the time.
Yeah. Well, no, I understand that, but I'm wondering if these vendors, if this is, is the city of Carlton the only place they've ever had to pay this, or does Newburgh have it? Does McMinnville have it?
So a lot of these businesses participate, and they're like institutional and Newburgh, and they told me that they have had that fee.
Okay.
Um, it's something that we're gonna lower our vendor costs to accommodate for vendors to want to participate with that.
So you're, you're also charging the vendor to show up?
We are charging vendors to participate, that is correct.
And what does that be?
Um, it depends if they are a PBA member or a non-PBA member.
Okay, because they were a non-PBA member.
So non-PBA members is $150, which has always been the standard vendor fee for Carlton Crush. So this is my second year. And then for non-numbers is $50, or for PBA numbers is $50.
One quick clarifying question. On one motion, on the motion that says September 9th and 10th, and then on the background it says Saturday, September 10th. Is it in fact due a night, like Friday night, Saturday, or the Saturday, Sunday, or what are the dates?
Yeah, so the way I understood it is they want to be a better date. And then, um, they want the date of when we can access the park. So ideally, they can access the park, uh, Friday midday to, uh, start setting up, not vendors, but like the, um, Oracle Restaurant and Ashland is what we're asking to.
I fancy that.
And then September 10th is when you're going to spend, and that's the actual event date. That's how I understood it.
I just have a quick question. I'm looking at this map here. Where is the Crush platform going to be? And where, and is there going to be music? And would that be in the same area?
Yeah, so it's a stage, uh, and I thought the stage was on the map. So the basketball court is essentially north of the basketball court.
Yeah, I see it. I see it.
Okay.
I see it.
Okay, yeah, it's north of the basketball court.
Okay.
What will be in the basketball court?
Um, so, yeah, we're thinking about having tables and chairs for whoever wants a seat. And so, uh, essentially the question area.
Can I make a motion? Um, I make a motion that the city council approve the event application, the use of Lad Park on September 9th and 10th. The use of amplified equipment, the closure of the Grant Street parking stalls, and waiving the 5% nonprofit fee for concession sales in the concession agreement for the Carlton Crush. Don't you?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm in favor, as long as you talk to Kevin about the crosswalk.
And did you want to volunteer?
I'll talk to you later.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Okay, next on the agenda is, oh boy, Carlton Workforce Sidewalk Project. Okay.
All right. Dean was supposed to be here tonight to explain what he's been going through with contractors, but the summary is basically in your memo. And, uh, we have tried with multiple contractors to get something going. And we're not going to look at this as negative. We're going to look at this, we've put all this work into place about waiving fees and developing forms, and we're going to regroup and try to make it a better project to bring to you next year, hopefully with contractors, maybe when things have calmed down and construction. But right now, um, it's not going to happen this year, given our tight schedule and given the cost. We are very disappointed, but we're not, I'm not going to say to be.
We're not giving up.
We're not giving.
Thanks.
Good project, we believe in it. We're going to try.
Thank you.
Sometimes things take two steps.
Alrighty, Reservoir dredging project change order.
Okay, the reservoir dredging project ran into some issues with turbidity. And so last year we paused the project, as you remember, in order to work with DEQ and figure out some solutions that works within all of our permitting agencies with negotiating extensions of some of our agreements, like the Minnesota Water and Light. And, um, working with the DEQ, we are required to add a polymer so that we can get the turbidity where it needs to be within our permit level. And we have to add a turbidity curtain. And they had to remove their equipment and they had to do a survey to see what might have changed over the winter months. Ryan, do you want to add anything to that?
Uh, no. I mean, you're a pretty girl. You're a scandalous girl.
So, um, contractor, we had to, didn't want our work started. And so the contractor has moved forward, but because of the significance of the amount of this change order, I'm bringing it forward to council. But he in good faith has moved forward with getting the process started because we have a very short brand water.
Do you want to talk about where that money's coming from?
The money is a grant from the state of Oregon for 2.5 million. The contract was originally 1.1, oh, the total, 700. And the total with this change order brings it up to 1.1 million. So we are also exploring other opportunities of what to do with that grant funding as we. Dredge it up. Improve that.
I have a question. So I, I don't have the contract in front of me, but these, the, the conditions from last summer and things that they ran into was not the city of Carlton's fault.
No.
So where in our contract, I see a $75,000 remode fee. Like, it seems like we were paying you to come back out because, you know, something happened on a, on a project that you bid. You know, you bid a certain amount of dollars, unforeseen things happen in the construction world all the time. I'm just curious, where in our contract accounts for, you know, something happening, a company has to demobilize and then.
Yes, if you cannot pin the, pin the cause on the company, if it's a cause that's unrelated to their malfeasance or lack of performance, the contract allows them to, one, make delay claims. It also allows them to make a, what, a claim for an equitable adjustment for unforeseen circumstances. If cities regulatory requirements change, and that's essentially a specification change, then the costs of undertaking those changes are not the contractor's fault. They don't take that risk, uh, because the city lays out the specifications and requirements for how it's to be done. If that changes because the EQ has imposed another requirement, then that's not a contractor. Uh, that's not something that you could force on the contractor. Contract under public contracting, uh, requires the city to be subject to claims for equitable adjustments or change circumstances. That's essentially what I see coming forward here.
Is there a motion?
I move that the city council approve change order number three and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye, you're opposed, or I?
I had more questions than I think you have.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion passes. Okay. Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrade Amendment Number One, Cultural Survey.
Thank you, Eric. Well, doing survey work at the wastewater treatment plant as required. They found 32 Native American artifacts. The scope of work that's in front of you is the next step that would be required to determine if the site is significant. This requires digging down much further than just the base level, the ground level, to see if there are additional artifacts that are there. So this is asking for permission to continue the work that would be required as a result of that. Ryan, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, so that's the F line going through the river. And for the outflow, this, uh, DEQ. So we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to get that, I.
So absent approving this, the project can't move forward?
We would explore alternatives, but this is the best pick alternative as a project was designed. So the recommendation is interesting.
So when you're saying that, if you had to explore other avenues, we'd be doing it. So when you're saying that, if you had to explore other avenues, we'd be doing it not in that area? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
The next round of excavation. Staying used and other people were standing through the fire. And it could make a difference in our. The only thing is, is that we all know it floods down there every winter, and it always has. So I doubt that they made a real serious camp.
But we need to verify that.
So they're getting these, yeah, these days, they're getting.
Is it near the river?
The other thing is, some of it came in with floodwaters.
Yes, just.
Just right next to the river?
Just, just east of your current.
Okay. Is there any more conversation? Questions?
So with this, I mean, is this, when you're doing these excavation projects of that, they go out to bid, or whoever does them? Problem like this, it is ever brought up to have funds set aside just in case? Or just in case, you know, we run into this issue? Or is this the first time this issue's happened there?
This is a standard practice. You're going to have, you're going to have that type of work. You are still in engineering, right? We're basically defined.
So it's a permitting or.
Permitting phase.
So really, then what happens if they do dig down and they find, they find out this was a traditional something?
Well, they'll, if they do, let's say they do, they find substantial artifacts on site, then local Navy pilots are going to have an input.
There would either be mitigation, relocation, or cancellation.
So it could hold up the whole project for quite some time.
Yes, but the last thing you want is to find these artifacts in the middle of construction, have a contractor that makes a claim for, for an unforeseen condition that ends up being much worse.
Correct, and we run into more of the, pull the equipment out, bring the equipment back in.
Re-earlization and just same property, different cause, but same problem.
Same issue.
Yeah, okay. So that's why, in the permitting process, most of the permitting agencies are requiring some kind of cultural survey to ascertain whether or not a problem exists or in fact not during a construction.
Brian, where are those artifacts now? Where are those artifacts now? The mystery?
Because they're not, they're not in my office. Those people act above and above.
Only with the consultants.
Those people, what?
The consultants.
That you hired to do the survey.
Maybe the dog picked them up.
They'll keep them forever. How will they dispose of them?
Yeah, but there are consultants that come in and take care of those kinds of things. Yeah.
I move that council approve amendment number one to the scope of work for the wastewater plant upgrade and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All righty. Civic Center, I want to make sure I'm at the right one. Yeah, Civic Center Modular Lease.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last meeting, we talked about the redline documents that the attorney, as well as the Montagburg Company. We have finalized some of the provisions and gotten some clarification on some of the questions that came out of their conference meeting. The company does allow for a 30-day window shift to delivery if we do need it. But after the 30 days after the initial timeline is established, the unit delivery needs to be pushed again, then they start charging the 50% monthly rate for storage of the unit. Because the units aren't such high demand, they cannot, they cannot alter the 50% storage fee. So we are trying to work to time it as close to possible to when we need and start the transition. There is, if, once the agreement's set, the pricing is set. If the agreement is not signed, if the pricing terms are revisited every 30 days to adjust the market. And if there is, the city decides not to go forward after we've ordered it, there's only a big fee for what is done to the modular unit for customization for our offices and for public space. And that amounts to about $1,600. We have been working with holes, and actually, some of this moving transition, as noted in your memos, happening right now. And we're working with companies, we're even going to close, we're starting to close the offices for several hours at a time on Friday. We're actually going to close the office appointments only on Friday to allow staff to fully focus on purging what we don't need to move. Somebody wants to pay to move something we don't need. Packing things up, getting things ready, working with utilities. And the idea is, we are going to move as, in phases, so that we can identify any bugs. So we want to have the modular in place so that we can get IT down there, get our AV equipment down there, figure out if there are any issues with phones or anything of that sort, so we can start moving staff down there gradually to make this as smooth as a transition as possible. And if we do find bugs, we can iron them out early. So we are aiming for around November, November 1st, you can see in your timeline, as far as getting the modular in there, so that we can start getting services, like water, sewer, IT, so that we can start having our public media moving items down there. We're already shifting public works. Brian and I talked this morning about moving areas in the bay, the heated bay, for administrative staff, so we can start filing items that can no longer be located on site, down to building. We're in the process of getting with the public works to build the structure that will house the TVs, so that we can transition them gradually and try to iron out any. So get on back and forth, finalize it. The attorney has reviewed it, and we are now presenting it to the consideration.
Questions, comments?
And I should ask, Amy, she, Brian, do you have anything to add about the transition of the move?
I think we can have it all.
Counselors?
So it says in here about the, working with the utilities and the post office, I guess, utilities for power and things. Why is it during this transition period where you're moving everyone down to that new area until we get the new city hall built? Why are we concerned about the electric car charging station?
Because they will be working in that parking lot, so that electric car charging stations have to, both of them have to.
But we're going to move them, but are we going to rehook them up? Or just forget about them and tell what?
Well, we need to get ahold of the company right now to figure out if there's a place we could hook them up to. There's a lot, my understanding is, there's a lot that goes into those electric charging stations, so we may not be able to rehook them up, but we're going to have to store them. But we at least have to.
Well, that's my question. I don't see a reason to rehook them up. They just put them in storage until we get the new city hall built.
The only reason we would look at a temporary hookup is they are used quite frequently. So that would be the only consideration, but it may not be feasible because of the amount of infrastructure that are required. So we may just be looking at storage like we were.
Yeah, if it's going to cost the city extra money for those few months, hook them up, I'd think, forget it, store them.
We're looking at a year to 18 months.
Well, a few extra months.
Can we charge those for that? It's all handled by the company.
Would, would that not fall on them to have some investment in that? Like, I mean, I don't know what, is there a lease agreement? Or is there an agreement with the city as far as, because they're profiting off the charging station?
There is an agreement. We are actively trying to engage them in a conversation to let them know we are moving and we need to do something.
Actively trying. Are they?
But I think at the end of the day, I guess, is what I'm getting at, is if they don't actively come to the table, then they, they miss out on the profit, not the city.
Correct.
You know, it's a convenience for our citizens, absolutely, and people visiting the town, for sure.
Yeah, it would seem to me that it would, you know, they should be engaging with other businesses downtown that might have space to put those. But that's their issue.
They are still.
Sorry, what?
As far as we know, they are still in.
Yeah. Okay, folks, do we have a motion? Somebody?
I can do it here, I have it. I move that the council authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents associated with the modular building lease.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pulling hands, Steve.
We've got to slow down, let people think about it. You jump the gun sometimes on your.
Do I?
You do.
I figure by the time we get ready for a vote, everybody's made up their mind. Okay, the motion passes.
Says what they have to say.
All right. You remind me of that. Moving on to, let's see, did we want to do anything on the Main Street SCA grant?
Yes, you have a recommendation in your packet that the staff is removing. At the time we were considering this, it was thought that each Main Street project would wrap up by that September 1st deadline. And it would become apparent that you're not going to. And then you saw in the. Even applied to that $50,000. So we're going to go back to Walt's statement earlier, a bird in the hand, a bird in the bush, and we're going to stick with our $100,000 grant.
You don't need any action from counsel on this.
Do not. Okay, so we have a $100,000 grant for that. For West Main. And we have the 1.5 million Congressional Directive Spending Request currently moving forward.
Okay. All righty. Public hearing for the surplus park property.
Public hearing, I'm going to turn this over to the city attorney.
The staff has proposed, I think this is starting on page 107. You know, you passed a resolution in.
I think it's either July or.
Passed the resolution in July, called for a public hearing in regard to the city staff's proposal to, the council to consider disposing of certain surplus property. It's in your packet, I think it's on page 109, outlining. The staff has talked about doing a public bidding process for this property. You have in, in your packet, a draft sales public property notice, quest for sealed bids, which is, which has been drafted in preparation for your review. Also, in your agreement is a potential purchase and sale agreement. Should a bid come in that you, as a council, are willing to accept, there is a form of purchase and sale agreement that's established. That's pretty, pretty part of the bid packet, so to speak. The. In, in talking about disposal of property, the statute requires that there be some information in this public hearing concerning the possible value of the property that's being proposed for sale. And the only two values that I received from staff were the, were the value that the city had received for the, for the sale of the strip underneath the rock block building. And that was some, some years ago, 2017, I think. And that was somewhere in the area of $5 a square foot. Another vacant property sale was noted by, was it Amy? That was at a value of approximately. $47.09. That's quite a spread. I can tell you from information from the assessor's office that the real market value of the land underneath the property that lies just north of this strip, which is owned by 214 West Main Street LLC, that property is valued, in the, in the case of tax law 1600, it's valued at a rate of $20.89 per square foot. And the next property immediately to the east of, the north of that, excuse me, the east of that, is valued at $25. So you have values for $47 at one end, or vacant parcels that's subject to development, to down to $5 for a parcel that was underneath an existing building that probably had a halfway decent claim for adverse possession against the city. That's kind of the high and the low. In between, you've got the assessor's values at $20 and $25 for the actual properties that are adjacent, or the one property owner that probably has the most interest in acquiring. So really, the purpose of this public hearing is to provide that information to you, to allow the public to speak, if the public wishes to do so, about the tran, the proposed sale. And then for the council to make a determination of, do you want to advertise this property for public bids? Do you want to proceed with publishing a notice in the paper, allowing anyone who wants to put in a bid to put it at whatever amount they, they want to offer? And that's about, because I'm attached into what I need to say, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we need to open a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. How do we do that? You're not helping me. How do I do that? We'll just.
Public hearing is hereby open.
Okay. So that's where, I just wanted to make sure I was not screwing up again.
So I would like the, the comments I just made to be entered into the record of the public hearing as a staff report.
Thank you.
I think the next thing you would do is ask for any questions from the council as the staff report.
So is there any discussion, questions?
Can we ask for a minimum?
You can, in a, in a sale, you can say that the city would not take less than X dollars, or you cannot do that. You just have the option to, to reject.
Oh, we do, okay.
You can reject any offer that's received. You're not required to take a bid that you're, so I would recommend that you not do that because you want to know what prospective bidders might be out there.
No, how many square feet is it?
It's approximately 600 square feet.
Is this the walkway area that goes from South Park to the park, to Lab Park? It's like a.
It's a strip, it's a flagpole.
It's the, it's the grassy area between Goldron, the back of Goldron.
Okay.
It's the walkway I always use, but it's like a walkway.
Yeah, for you, that would be very convenient.
And if somebody has that parking.
And if somebody has that parking space, right?
I think it's just behind Jovara's place.
Yeah.
Doesn't go all the way to the public street.
Right, but the public street, that's on the front of the, right, like the dump.
Are there any other questions or comments? I promise I won't interrupt.
Then mayor, you can ask for any public comment.
Is there anyone from the public that wants to make a comment on this?
I see no hand raised at the time.
That's in case you can close the hearing.
All right, do we need a motion to close the hearing? Okay, I can do that one. Given that there is no further conversation or questions or comments, we'll close the public hearing and move on to a discussion about whether we're offering this or not.
One quick question that I have, mayor, is, or, so the staff time and the advertising time and things like that, to go out to bid for something and potentially a bit of $5. Like, I understand that we can reject bids when they come through.
And you can impose, you can impose whatever terms, which might include payment of all costs. For instance, there was a survey here. That's a cost. So you may, you may want to recoup that as part of it. But the cost of the property is all.
You want to set a price? Okay.
Have we had people, apparently, we must have had somebody that wanted to buy it, right? One of the two.
It's the same owner for both parcels.
Oh, owns both of them.
Yeah, there's really only one logical buyer here. And we, you won't know until you put it out whether that's a serious interest or not, if it is. And if you reject a bid, you can always do a counter offer. At the point you've put it out for public bid and you didn't get an acceptable bid, you can then negotiate with any bidder. This may come back to you at time or.
In a motion, we need to say something, anything specific about the bid?
Nope. Oh, the sale notice itself talks about.
So just the motion is just to approve, putting it out for a bit.
Exactly.
I'm of the council advertised for bids. So of the property, is there a definition of the property?
The is shown on the site survey and the material.
Yeah, property is shown on the site survey that's contained in the council pack.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 opposed? Motion carries. Item I, burn ban discussion.
Thank you, mayor. So this is great, but our fire team and we have best brief of survey should be. What that's, what survey question is. And what kind of length of time that survey would be available? One of the points of information when considering this potential plan on burning city land is what alternatives do residents have for getting rid of yard debris? And council has just authorized for Recology to start yard debris service at both class recycling. I did check in with Recology to get updated numbers from the June meeting. And we have about 13.7 subscriptions of all the customers that a Recology has. So that's a pretty good start to yard debris service.
13.7.
13.7%.
Oh, 7%.
Not for the couple of months. So I have already received some resident input on this and my recommendation at this point in time is perhaps we wait a few more months to see how people start subscribing to yard debris service to really give people an opportunity to educate themselves and utilize the yard debris service. And to see where we're at after the first of the year, maybe in March, we could bring this up and see how many subscribers we have at that point in time and whether we need to do a survey at that point in time and maybe an education. That's just an option. With everything we have on our plate, that's just the recommendation.
I like that recommendation. Before we just go, you know, banning, burning, stuff like that, let this kind of build up and see how people adjust to that.
I see a lot more sign up.
Are there different sizes? It's one, eight. They're blue, right?
They wasn't the white.
Oh, that's all side bottles. Which are they, what?
You don't have to be as long.
All right. So, discussion done, isn't?
I think I'm okay with.
Holding on.
Okay, so our part, that, I guess it's past, starting election, it has goal setting and then.
Let it go through the winner, draft starts growing, see how many people will.
Yeah.
And we can, we can ask the same question in March, do we start with a survey?
Okay, all right. Remind us in March that we had this discussion.
It's going on the agenda.
Yeah.
Get that on recording, can you just play the recording?
Okay. Thank you. Community involvement.
We have had as a council goal of how to get the community more involved in decision making. We have talked about the town halls, we have talked about surveys, have talked about a public engagement. There was a request to see what kinds of software are out there, just a couple of examples, and what that might cost. You have two very different books in front of you. They do different types of citizen engagement. I do want to remind when we did the civic center survey that 77% of survey respondents rated the city's communication with residents as good to excellent. And so again, at this point in time, given the engagement that we are doing with the weekly census, getting surveys out there and getting over 10% response rates, which are pretty good for surveys, even ones done by professional survey companies. Given that information, that people are feeling satisfied, my recommendation at this point in time is that we not take on another project that's at 60% monitor update. That we revisit this at another point.
Would you say March?
I'm here in March.
March, March is good. Yeah, the thing that concerns me is that you guys are gonna be right in the middle of moving and trying to get a lot of, a lot of moving parts put back together right now.
And there's a lot of moving pieces associated. But there's a lot of. Brian has a few public works things going on as far as sewer line systems, dredging projects, the.
Pump station.
Pump station.
And this is a problem because.
Yeah, and we've got an audit coming up, but anyway, I could go on. You've got the work plan. You've had it. You've seen it.
Yeah.
What you are engaging.
So my recommendation is that we pause this and revisit it at another point.
Starts.
March.
Okay, I'm just going you all for the length of the March agenda.
So, this is sort of a side question to this, but I think you had mentioned to me that we have about plus or minus 1,000 emails that the council tidbits go out to. So I'm, I'm not sure, you know, I mean, because that's households. So if you look at the, I'm not sure how much percentage of that represents the population, but maybe we could just, just to do another little push movie out of the children bill to remind folks that haven't signed up to, if they choose to sign up so they can receive those tidbits.
If we've done that, when was the last time we did it? I want to say that was like summer of last year, with the facility bill. That sound good, right? Yeah, yeah.
We've got a few new, yeah, we've got a few new residents.
So we are limited in what we can put out and cost. Well, we end it's a note procedurally when new customers come in and sign up for water. They. And at that time, they're automatically, basically have to unroll themselves.
So you're capturing new people. Well, at some point when it's feasible, just to put out a reminder, I think. But otherwise, I'm good with delaying on this.
Did you have something you wanted to share with the room?
We were just talking about how can we unroll from the bill?
From the bill?
Mayor, I have something I'd like to share.
Yes, sir.
There was a movie, one title thing, it's called Three Little Words. And I remember it, it's something about love in Paris or something. But I'm gonna come back to you next month with the mentions. It's about three little words. The reason is because the ballot title you adopted last month are captioned, it was 13 words instead of 10. And so where it said, put in city, what they intended was for us to put in Carlton, and I put in the city of Carlton. Right, so I'm gonna ask you to amend that ordinance to change that next month. Delete those three words, okay?
You can only have 10 words on the.
Only have 10 words in the caption. And the, the county clerk will not accept a, a, a referral with that. So we have taken out the three words. We have published without the three words. We are gonna apply without the three words, and I'm gonna ask you to ratify what we've done.
But you said from the ballot?
This is for the ballot caption.
For the psilocybin.
For the psilocybin measure.
Oh, that, okay.
So, three little words, too many, too many words, my mistake. I'm gonna bring you an ordinance to fix that at your next meeting. Hopefully, hopefully. Okay, well, thank you for letting me let you know that.
Mayor, do you have anything to add about what we have engaged with and what their feedback is about communication?
As I mentioned the other day, so far, we're getting really good feedback. Pretty much, I don't know about the rest of you, if you're out talking to folks, if you hear anything back, we'd like to know. But certainly, when I've been out and about, I've talking to folks, they've been really positive about what they are hearing. The tidbits are a great thing. Yeah, they really like that. And they appreciate the fact that we are making some effort and are noticing that we're making that effort to keep people engaged and informed. So it's, so far, it's been going well. I guess I'll probably find out more in the next couple of months. So that's where we are. Does anybody else have anything?
No.
No?
Aye.
Who said it was hot?
Actually, it's not bad right now, yeah. Okay, I, motions, okay, meetings adjourned.